Roll call please.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Eugenio.
Here.
Councilmember Apodano. Mayor Protem Burner.
Here.
Mayor Dale.
Okay, please stand for pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. To the Republican Party. Lineation under God. In the soul with the resistance. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda. Mr. Marita.
Add an item to the agenda to adopt a resolution proclaiming an emergency related to tropical storm K. As you may or may not know, the governor recently proclaimed a state of emergency for several Southern California counties, including ours. And adopting this resolution will allow us to apply for funds to the extent we had damage or response costs to the storm. And so would ask that you add that I take have a motion to add that to the agenda. Make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second. Would that be fine to put that as E nine? And let's place a vote on that, please.
Motion passes five zero. That item will be added to E nine on the agenda.
Turner, was any action taken in closed session?
No, mayor, but as a report out, the council did discuss the public employee performance evaluation of the city manager and no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to C one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item of the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. That time states your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. If you'd like to speak. Yes, ma'am, please come to the podium.
Hello, good evening. My name is Adilene Rysangam, a resident of Imperial and Project Viva Volunteer. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, Project Viva and Partners surveyed the community of Imperial on their thoughts about smoking and secondhand smoke in outdoor public areas. It was found that eighty seven percent of Imperial residents said that they had a problem with breathing breathing in secondhand smoke in outdoor public areas. There's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Expanding smoke-free areas to outdoor dining and service areas will improve the outdoor dining experience and protect its residents. I want to encourage the council to look into discussing smoke-free spaces. Environments to create smoke-free areas and help adults model healthy behavior for its children and encourage people to smoke less or even quit. Research shows that prohibiting smoking in public areas decreases the chances the kids will smoke or use tobacco products. Creating smoke-free areas outdoors is a way to communicate for communities to make outdoor spaces even more conducive conducive to healthy living. I asked the council to get smoke-free comprehensive outdoor spaces as an agenda item to improve the health and life expectancy of our residents. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're just gonna skip through C two and move to D consent agenda.
What should I approve?
Second.
Can I have a motion in a second? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Go to A one, which is a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing at seven eighteen.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you, we have the amendment to the Victoria Ranch specific plan, plan unit development zone change and subdivision revision to the Victoria Ranch Unit four B tentative track map. They would shows on the full to name map for B, it's brand one hundred and two new housing units. On Wednesday, July twenty seven, twenty twenty two, the planning commission reviewed this item and recommended approval to city council. One aspect of the planning commission approval included a fifteen feet driveway and a street wheel of forty forty feet, which allows parking on both sides. The planning commission recommended the proposal, which included the fifteen feet driveway. Subsequent to the planning commission adoption of his recommendation, it has come to light that a fifteen feet driveway will not accommodate many vehicles and sidewalk intrusion is likely to occur. It should be noted that in the Victoria Ranch subdivision, a fifteen feet driveway with forty feet street has not generated any complaints of sidewalk intrusion. Nevertheless, it is staff's recommendation to approve the ordinance and resolution subject to including a twenty feet driveway, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments?
Just to clarify, that's gonna be a twenty foot driveway with a forty foot road.
That is correct. Parking on both.
Parking on both sides on the driveway and the street.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing at seven twenty. Okay, any motions?
I'll make a motion for the introduction first reading by title only of ordinance number eight twenty two. Approving the zone change from R one resident, single family to P planned unit development within the Victoria specific plan.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Make a motion to approve item two, adoption of resolution number twenty twenty two dash fifty nine. Approving amendments to the Victoria Ranch specific plan, plan unit development, zone change and subdivision revision to the Victoria Ranch Unit four B tentative track map.
Second, have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to E two, Second Street rehabilit rehabilitation reconstruction project from old SR eighty six to P Street. Bid twenty twenty one dash oh five slash S T B G K five one three four zero twenty four.
I'd like to note that there wasn't a lot of change orders, so that was nice. And I'll make a motion if there's no other comments. Do we have to do this in three or is it all one or how how do you guys want it? How does this work?
Do it as one.
Okay, make a motion to approve item one, two, and three. Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, move on to E three, approval of amended and restated joint powers formation agreement.
Mayor, council, a- as you know from or will recall, there's various state laws that have been enacted. And we've had discussions about SB thirteen eighty three and other recycling laws. There what what has been determined is there and there is also already in existence, a joint powers agreement with with involving all the cities and and the county to provide a a common kind of reporting on our existing solid waste situation. And the purpose of this amendment is to allow the the JPA to also handle reporting and related items on on the recycling matters. So the the city managers met a week ago and addressed this in some detail. And I I think we we all share this council's concern about costs and the whole idea, if you will, of the recycling. But we think this is the best way to address what the law calls for. So we would recommend that you approve the amended and restated joint powers agreement.
Any comments or questions?
Approve the Imperial Valley Resource Management Agency amended agreement.
Have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we'll move on to E four, discussion, approve emergency purchase and installation of a two thousand amp main breaker at WTP.
Mayor and council. Breaker at the water. This is on the treatment side of the plant, not the distribution side. They they each have separate breakers, separate main services in there. The two thousand amp breaker has tripped a couple of two, three times in the last several months, e- each time with no apparent reason, no fault, nothing that we can find. With any of the smaller, no equipment shorting out, nothing has caused it. The last time it tripped, we could not get it to reset. We called Watson out to to look at it. They came out along with A and A Electric, did some testing of it, finally got the unit to reset and informed us that the unit was going out. If this is an electromagnetic main breaker, not a not a hard. Let's see, it's not a hard, just a snap breaker. It's an electromagnetic breaker and that it was failing. And so we brought it to Dennis. We went ahead and started moving forward with emergency repairs, and this is ratification of that with an approximate cost.
Got to have it.
Different than the one that's old, right?
No, this is the one that was installed this morning.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to E five, discuss and approve emergency replacement of suction lines at various pumps and lift stations.
At least briefly early of the balance of the stations and and the suction line that provide the water to the pumps, we've found four of them that are in in need of, well, basically critical need repairs. They're they're sucking air at various levels, which is not allowing us to pump the sewage out of the all the way out of the wet wells. It's causing a surge, a surge systematic problem where the wastewater surges back into the lines and will allow the solids to settle out instead of flowing into the wet well. Went to Dennis with it. We talked about it. We went ahead and started moving forward with what parts we need. And we've enlisted A and R construction to help us. We we can't, we do not work in the confined space of a wet well. You have to go down and pump it out. And that's not something that we typically do or have or have ever done. And so we're moving forward with that, and we're requesting that you authorize the emergencies. And the and the lift stations are listed as Sandalwood Glen, Sky Ranch, Cross, and Colonial. Sandalwood Glen in particular because it takes sewage from two other housing tracks, so it's become a regional pump station itself.
I'm making a motion for approval of the section lines at pump and lift stations located at Sandalwood Glen and Ayton. Colonial pump station, Cross and Ayton, and Sky Ranch pump station.
Second. Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, just to just to confirm, that involves the approval of the resolution declaring the emergency.
Okay, E six, repairs to Sixth Street Apartments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the repairs in front of you are directly related to, hello, everyone. The repairs in front of you are actually related to what was placed on your agenda as E nine. I just say that to put some context to that. The city of Imperial owns a ten-unit affordable housing complex located on Sixth and H Street. As part of our response to Hurricane K and as we started examining, some of the buildings are inspecting them rather. It was determined that there was some significant flooding damage in which we even had to do some rehousing of the residents there over the weekend so we could respond to those repairs. The repairs are quite extensive. We did, if you recall, about a year or so ago, go out to bid for this project and it came in over six hundred thousand. Through our talented staff between public services and parks, we are able to make the repairs to the roofing. However, based on cost analysis, we are asking for your consideration to amend the agenda item in front of you for not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars in the repairs of the roofing for the entire complex. And to add in a twelve percent contingency to that, just in the event that we have to go out to seek some of the supplies there. But we will be able to perform the work in-house. I will stand for any questions that you may have. And a phone might have some of more of the specifics as to the cost estimates.
Mr. Mayor and and council, Alexis is operating at a bit of a disadvantage because she she's remote. In in between the time when we we were focusing on the roof because the roofs were leaking. Since that time, to the extent work has been done and 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 up to and including today, it's been determined that in fixing the roof, various other items are gonna be involved. And so I we we thought at the point in time that the agenda was prepared that if you approved the amount that's in the agenda plus a contingency, that that would be adequate. Since that time, i- it's been determined that there are various other items that were damaged as a consequence of the roof. damaged as a consequence of the roof issues. Uh, Othon can detail those number, uh, the exact items involves cabinets and drywall and things like that, but, but the number, uh, that we're asking for approval for and, and which we do have in that, in that particular, uh, uh, account, uh, that, for the, for these apartments, is a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And O- Othon can detail the, the items a- aside from the roof, uh, if you wish to hear that.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the hundred thousand. Not to exceed a hundred thousand. We, we, we're asking this.
One, one eight.
Hundred, hundred eighty thousand.
Could, could before a second, could I ask a question on that though? Um, are we going to paint that trim around that building after we do the roof? Because the trim is starting to get really, the paint's coming off, we're gonna have a permanent run.
And that's, that's part of the cost estimate, we're gonna, not only paint, we're gonna remove and replace and paint.
Good, good, okay.
It's, it's okay.
So who does the maintenance on this, these apartments? I know they've, they've come up before that we've had to do different things to them. Is that a city thing? Or do we have somebody to go by and check sit, or what, how do we, how do we determine this?
The ci- at the time of its acquisition, uh, the city contracted, uh, with, with a real estate management company. So, so they basically screen tenants, collect rents, uh, and, uh, my understanding is that they have m- maintenance people on staff to address, uh, day-to-day maintenance items.
Uh, roofs.
And, and, uh, uh, I, I, you know, that, I think a discuss, we'll, we'll have that discussion for another day in terms of, uh, of, uh, uh, whether or not what's been done has, is, has proved to be adequate. Uh, but in, this, the city has not, uh, since, s- since the point in time where it acquired ownership, the city has not, what, I, I think we did go out, there was a sewer issue, right? And we did address that, but, but the issues with the roof, uh, and, uh, 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 some electrical and things like that have, we have, we have not addressed. Uh, and, uh, and so we're, we're, we're detailing what has been going on in terms of day-to-day maintenance, and so we'll, we'll be able to provide you that information as to what sort of maintenance has been happening at those apartments.
Go through it and later on come back at more than a hundred eighty thousand? What's the value of the, of the apartments? We dumping more money into it than we, than it's worth? I know we have, I know we have residents, I understand that, but is there?
Well, a- as you recall, and, and yeah, I, I don't, I, I think at the point in time they were acquired, we got it at, 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 uh, a, a tax sale, as I recall. And so, uh, and as it turned out, there were some other liens, and so even, I think what the city originally pa- paid was probably below market. What that, where that's, where that market stands now relative to the kind of money that it's gonna take to get them where they, uh, should be? I, I don't know as I, a- as I, uh, si- sit here.
Just, just looking at the property, how many acres is it, Othon? Did you say two acres?
Did less than that.
Okay, well, just the acreage alone underneath is worth close to the hundred eighty thousand, so it's, it's worth it, we need to do it. So, we have a motion? Jim, I, okay, I have a motion a second, please vote.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Emperor, just to, y- y- to answer, answer your question, y- you recall, the bid we got, as I think as, uh, Ms. Brown pointed out, was u- upwards of six hundred thousand dollars. Now recognizing that was a prevailing wage situation, but I would think that would suggest that a hundred eighty thousand gets us maybe a good part of the way there, but I would suspect not all of the way there.
And, and I know this is already passed, but maybe is this something we can do in-house and save ourselves some money?
Well, what, what you have before you and what you approve contemplates, I, I thi- I think as Ms. Brown pointed out, Public Services and, and Parks have some folks that have, uh, bring a lot to the table in that regard, and so we think we can do it with our folks.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero for the amount of one hundred eighty thousand.
Okay, um, E seven, uh, Enterprise Fleet Management Agreement.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, during the budget process, uh, you charged staff with, um, moving forward with an implementation of a fleet management strategy. Uh, we did engage with Enterprise, and I know that they did provide, um, a presentation to you all during our budget process. This is to formalize that agreement rather than the original, um, rather than the original thought of replacing only three vehicles outright, we are able to enter into a fleet replacement, uh, mechanism, you could see they're attached over through twenty twenty-five. Um, it was heard and taken into consideration as to what those vehicles will be replaced with, um, so we're saving a little bit of dollars and cents there. Um, there is a little bit of a contingency built in, um, just because of the market and what we're seeing happen right now, but we're still able to move forward with, um, replacing eleven vehicles in our, in our first turn, um, for that amount in front of you for a hundred and fourteen thousand, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Ms. Brown, I got a quick couple of questions, and I apologize because I can't remember, uh, reading it on the agenda. I don't have my digital devices, so, um, maintenance, i- is that gonna be us still, or is that gonna go through Enterprise?
It is a combination, um, as of this point, uh, for, for new vehicles coming in, there, there is maintenance for those built into this, um, but we do still have an existing fleet to maintain, um, and we will be, we will be working through that as we grow through this program.
But these eleven?
But we will still have a need. Yeah, these eleven, no, it's okay, these eleven, yes, will be under that maintenance agreement, but all existing in our fleet will still be done in-house, that can be done in-house, um, but will, the rest will be through Enterprise.
And so what happens after five years? The five years? No. Sorry, I'm trying to.
Through, through twenty twenty-five. So we're.
How long is this lease for, as I'm trying to remember?
Right now, what's in front of you is only for the next three fiscal years, we would, we would come back to you, yes, we would come back to you, um,
But it's not a five.
To move forward, or, no, it's through twenty twenty-five, but that's, think of that in, in fiscal year terms, and unfortunately, we're, we're not that far away from that.
Okay, because I, I, what I was looking here is we had one that came in at, uh, sixty-month term. Unless I was reading this wrong.
Correct.
So a half-ton pickup truck, we're gonna get to at a term of sixty years, term of sixty, for annual average, uh, seventy-five hundred miles.
Yes.
But that would be a five-year.
That's a five-year lease, yes, you are correct, I apologize.
Okay, just, so we're gonna be a fi- uh, hundred and fourteen, hundred and fourteen for five years.
This hundred and fourteen is only for this fiscal year? Yes, and then it is subject to adjustment because we can't, we understand, obviously our budgeting constraints fluctuate, Enterprise understands that as well, so we would go through, um, each year approving what we would be rotating out as part of the budget process. So if we needed to, um, bring that budget down, we can do it then, or we can increase it depending on what we're able to do at that point in the budget process.
Thank you.
All moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
On to E eight, abusive conduct policy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, in front of you, in an effort to promote a healthy and positive workplace, the city is asking your consideration in adopting an abusive conduct policy, um, and I will stand for any questions if you have them.
Motion, comments?
Make a motion to approve the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six-one to adopt abusive conduct policy.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to E nine, on the, uh, proclamation declaring emergency.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, a- as you, as you may know, the governor, uh, uh, proclaimed an emergency related to Tropical Storm K, uh, and, uh, for, uh, several Southern California counties, including a period, Imperial. Uh, adoption of this pro- proclamation by this council will allow, uh, the city, uh, us to, uh, pursue reimbursement for some of the expenses that we, we have incurred as a consequence of the tropical storm.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Hey, uh, we're going to adjourn this meeting till the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, October fifth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.